Grier, are you online? Councilmember Wierin, I don't know if you would want to call this to order. The mayor is having some trouble with connection. If you would be willing to do that, or you'd like to wait a little bit longer.
I'm happy to call it to order. We can get that part out of the way. So, all right. I'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the city council for the city of Marshalltown. We are meeting virtually. There are probably just a couple people in city hall council chambers at 10 West State Street. And the rest of us are on GoToMeeting.com. The date is December 14th, 2020. And the time is 5:30 PM. There is a notice to the public I'll read. And then we'll officially be off and running with the meeting. The mayor and city council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You are required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and to limit the time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less in that others, in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and as a whole, and not to any councilor specifically. It is at the direction of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. So we are officially called to order and please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
which stands one nation under God. Liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Kayla?
Yes, here.
Downey?
Here.
Who?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Wierin?
Here. Okay. And let me just switch to the agenda here. Okay. Now is the time set aside for mayor, council, and administrator comments. Do any of the city council members have any comments?
Bethany, this is Gary. I'd like to make a comment, please.
Yes, Gary.
I would like to put a stop to these virtual meetings. This is not working well for us or for the public. Someone has told me that we have got cases of COVID as a result of these meetings. We're practicing social distancing. I would like us to return back to council chambers and have the members that were elected to be present be present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Are there other council comments?
Yes, I'd like to make one if possible.
You're going.
I wanted to thank you. I wanted to thank all of the people on our recognition board and commissions tonight. You know, as I read over that list and looked at the number of years that many of those people have served, I would bet that Jerry Young probably didn't have a lot of people ever come up to him and say, wow, great job on the water board, or thank you for helping on the board of adjustment, or on down the line for all of those volunteer boards that people step forward and give their time. So I really appreciated seeing the number of years and time put into that. In that same vein, I saw that we have some surplus items from our police force, which are actually canine dogs. It's hard to think of them in the same way we think of a used pickup truck. But I wanted to put a, I just wanted to thank our police force who has worked with the canine units to help use another tool to keep our community safe. And again, I know that we will be talking about those a little more in our consent agenda. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else? And the mayor is not here yet, so I don't see him. Do you? Anybody else? Okay.
I do not see him either. I have not seen him access via phone either.
Do you have any comments, Ms. Kinzer?
Yes, I would just like to say that you will see that there are a number of individuals, as councilmember Cahill mentioned, that are on our agenda tonight. I'm going to scroll down so that you can, you can see who we, who had a milestone year of service in 2020. Unfortunately, we can't do like we did last year and get together and have a little reception to recognize those. But I do want to say that we hope that in 2021, a year from now, we will be able to get together to recognize those with milestones in 2021 and take the time during that to recognize John Maltz, Kelly Thurston, Matt Helles, councilmember Mike Goudy, Merrill Price, Gary Young, Harris Sibley, who are very individuals who have given quite a bit of collective time. And I do want to let everybody know that we will have a press release coming up tomorrow to be recognized as we've been supposed to.
That's great. Okay, I see that Mayor Grier has arrived. Ms. Kinzer, we're getting a lot of feedback from the council.
We have somebody by the phone that I'm going to go ahead and mute because there is a lot of feedback.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Joel, are you ready to take over? Well, I saw him. Okay. How about we move on?
Sorry, sorry. I was on mute. If you don't mind continuing, Sharon's trying to set up my own phone or my iPad to get me on.
Sure, we are at the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Sure.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Bill, Councilwoman Martin and Councilwoman Cahill seconded. And we're ready for roll call, please.
Bethany and Gary, I'd like two items removed from the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, go ahead.
Number eight and number nine.
Okay, all right, with that change, we have a motion and a second removing eight and nine, and we'll discuss those after we approve these. Roll call, please.
Kayla?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Who?
Here.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Wierin?
Yes. And now, Madam Clerk, would you please read the items that we just approved?
Approved minutes from November 23rd, 2020, made a list of $3,543,501.9 cents. Approved financial statements for August 2020. Approved civil service hire list for firefighters. Approved liquor license renewal for Ocean City Chinese Restaurant by West Main Street, Marshalltown. Approved a resolution approving a contract change order number one for Fulton &amp; Mink for the West End Park Project, PRK 19004, an increase of $6,500. Resolution approving contract change orders number 41, 46R, 48R, 59 through 63 for the Veterans Memorial Hall of Fame renovation project, an increase in the amount of $14,104.91. Resolution approving contract change order number one for Thorazine for the removal of dangerous winds from tarried trees, an increase of $175,000. Resolution accepting the assignment, the acceptance of offer for real estate from Rosemont Companies LLC to Southbridge Housing LLC for the purchase of property in the Southridge State subdivision. Resolution declaring certain properties surplus property and operating sale and disposal thereof, a 2003 dump truck with plow and spreader. Resolution approving the purchase of a 2022 International HV 507 Dump Truck with a snowplow and pulp spreader for the price of $160,457 from O'Callaghan International for the use in the street department. Resolution correcting the fiscal year dates for the improvement agreement and operations agreement with the Marshalltown Central Business District. Resolution approving contract change order number two for the Temper Creek Pedestrian Bridge Project, PRK 18001. Resolution approving contract change order number three for the Northeast FEMA Street Repairs Project, number FEMA 18004, a decrease of $113,489.61. Resolution approving amended engineering service agreement for the Marshalltown Manhole and Point Repair Project, number I9016002 for Fox Engineering, an increase of $53,600. Resolution approving amendment to engineering services agreement number three for the airport terminal problem, number APR 19002, engineering services for Class Auto and Government Associates, Inc., an increase in the amount of $5,500. Resolution approving contract change order number one for the South Sixth Street and West Marlinis Fox Cobert Repair Project, number SMW 149002. Resolution approving contract change order number one for the Washington Street Extension Project, number ECO 20001, a decrease of $58,819.11. Resolution approving contract change order number two for East Marlinis Fuller Extension Project, number ECO 19001, a decrease of $11,025. Resolution approving engineered statement of completion and accepting the Washington Street Extension Project, being project number ECO 20001, with a final project cost in the amount of $576,000 and a decrease of $576,560. Resolution approving engineered statement of completion and accepting of the Woodruff Construction LLC Water Fleet, Phase Three Contract Renovations Project, being project number WPC 19001, with a final project cost in the amount of $268,173.79. Resolution approving engineered statement of completion and accepting the contract change FEMA Street Repairs Project, being project number FEMA 18004, with a final project cost in the amount of $1,376,933.79. Resolution setting up public hearing on proposed 2020 amendments to the urban revitalization plans for urban revitalization area number one and urban revitalization area number two. Resolution setting a date for public hearing on its development agreement with the Toronto Clinic, including economic development payments in an estimated amount of $2.4 million.
We're up to number eight. Resolution 2020-341 declaring public canine Jordy and certain of his accessories as surplus property and authorizing the sale thereof upon conditions. And I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Okay, Cahill moved. Was that Thompson?
Isom.
Isom, thank you. Okay, discussion?
Martha, this is Gary. Is Pete Tupper online with us?
Yes, I am.
Hey, Mike, I'm just curious why we're retiring 100% of our canine officers and not having another canine officer in place before that. And then a second follow-up would be, are we going to continue to have canine officers? And if we are, how long are we going to have a gap from January 1st before we have another one on the board?
Okay, so the dog handlers made the decision jointly that it was time to retire the dogs. Both handlers and both dogs have been around for about the same amount of time and it was just time for the dogs to retire. They are getting the age of not being able to carry out the duties that we need them to carry out. So the timing is not ideal. It's just the way it worked out. So the dog program is definitely going to continue. Marshalltown has a long history of police dogs and a very successful program for many, many years. So that program is going to continue. We're going to stagger the purchase of the dogs. We want to get back to two dogs eventually, but we don't want to be in a situation where we have two dogs that are the same age again. So sometime in 2021, we will be identifying a new handler and purchasing a new dog and getting that handler and that dog fully trained. So it's a process. It takes a little bit of time. But I am confident that sometime in 2021, we will have one dog back in service. And then I'll work with staff to make a determination on when we're going to purchase the second dog.
Questions or comments about this item? Okay. Hearing none, I think we're ready for roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Wierin?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Who?
Here.
Okay, thank you. That passed. And number nine, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2020-342 declaring police canine Raji and certain of his accessories as surplus property and authorizing the sale thereof upon conditions. That was Isom. Do it a second.
Second.
Supposed to Thompson? And I take it it's the same discussion, so I'll call for roll.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Wierin?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Downey?
Yeah.
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I'll hand it over to Mayor Grier now. Thank you, Mayor Grier.
Thanks, Pro Tem, Wierin for handling that for me until I could get set up. Can you hear me okay? Good. Fortunately, I've got a spouse that can figure out my iPad better than I can. On to item I then, ordinances. Madam Clerk, please read the first one.
Approved new pharmacy native wine permit for the Owl River Brewing Company at 107 North First Street, Marshalltown.
Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Goudy for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Cahill for the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Kayla?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Who? Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Wierin?
Yes.
Very good. On to the next motion, one able.
Approved fiscal year 2022 budget schedule, including special meetings.
Is there a motion?
Move over, Your Honor.
Isom on the motion?
Second.
Goudy on the second. Any discussion?
Hi, this is Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So basically, the topics are outlined the same as they were last year, only the dates have been updated. But there are two special council meetings that we have to have, and one is on February 1st and the other one is on February 15th. So we need to know whether you want a noon meeting or a 5:30 PM meeting.
See, there works for Councilmember Isom.
Same here, Goudy.
Same here, Aaron.
Same here, Wierin.
Grier works for both dates, but suggests that we stay with the 5:30 time to catch people that have nine to five or eight to five chops.
Did you have anything further, Diana?
I do not.
Okay, then, Your Honor, based on your suggestion, if that is what the council would like to do, then we would set those at 5:30 PM on February 1st and February 15th for special meetings for budget purposes.
I probably ought to call for any objection. I guess not everybody weighed in.
I weighed in before I thought about my schedule, and I really do have two other meetings those nights, but I can probably get excused. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, let's call the roll.
Downey?
Yes.
Who?
Here.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Wierin?
Yes.
Kayla?
I will abstain since I will not be present for that.
All right. Let's carry it as well. Let's go on to, now it's item I on ordinance, or no, resolutions, I'm sorry. Item H, one able, please read that one.
Resolution approving an agreement with Kenday Keith Collaborative for the zoning ordinance rewrite.
Entertain a motion to approve it.
Don't move, Your Honor.
Council, Isom on the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I think I heard Mr. Martin first.
It was Goudy, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Goudy. Sorry. Discussion.
Yes, Michelle Spatheimer, Housing Community Development Director. We did put out a request for proposals to rewrite our zoning ordinance, so some We did put out a request for proposals to rewrite our zoning ordinance, so something that we've been discussing as part of the strategic plan. We received two different proposals and interviewed one of those firms, that's the Kenda Keith Collaborative, that's before you. We feel like they have a lot of experience with some code work, specifically zoning ordinance rewrites, worked in close to 200 communities to do that, and so have a really good perspective on different things that are happening in the zoning world, and can work through this ordinance rewrite with us. And so after negotiating the budget, we have before you a total of $124,235 for that proposal, estimating that the process would take approximately a year by the time we would get through the final approvals. And include looking at all of our current codes and taking into consideration some of the topics that we've been talking about that we need to address in more detail or add into our ordinances that maybe aren't covered currently. So staff would recommend approving an agreement and moving forward with Kenda Keith Collaborative on this process.
Any discussion or questions for Michelle? I suppose at this point, we ought to open up the, to the public, so let's open the mics or the phone lines.
Oh, the mic's muted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Give it a 10-second count. Roll call it is.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well, and one able, go on to item I ordinances, read the first one if you would.
Ordinance providing for the revision of taxes levied on taxable property in Amendment Number Eight to the Urban Rennail Plan for Marshalltown Urban Rennail Area Number Three, Pursuit into Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa, Second Reading, requesting a waiver of the Third Reading.
Is there a motion to approve this with the second, at the second reading, requesting waiver of the third reading?
Don't move, Your Honor.
I'm guessing that was Isom first and Martin second?
Okay.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Gowdy, I keep missing your voice, Mike, sorry about that, and you're one of the six people I can see on the screen.
I can put my finger out.
You know, that's not a bad idea. But let's go ahead and call for discussion or questions. Hearing none, I suppose we should open it up for 10 seconds to the public.
The mic's open, Your Honor.
Thank you. Roll call time.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carried, very good, on to the second one, if you would.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordnances to the Marshalltown, Iowa by amending Chapter 77 Parking Schedule, Schedule Two, No Parking Anytime for a reading.
Entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. Mr. Isom, thank you. Discussion.
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. The 800 block of East Boone serves as the entrance for the Marshall County Secondary Roads Yard, and the street parking allowed on both sides presents issues for large trucks and equipment attempting to enter the yard, and also presents a challenge for any vehicles turning from Eighth Avenue onto Boone Street. As such, we're seeking to amend the ordinance to eliminate parking in the 800 block of East Boone Street. Be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Justin, is there?
Yes, sir.
Has there been a survey of ample parking off the street for those folks who were there?
A formal survey, no, sir. The recommendation came from our street department, and in their visual survey that both of the homes that are on the south side of Boone Street should have ample parking in the driveways at their residence.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Did the clerk receive any written comments about this one?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. If nobody else on the council has anything to say, let's open the mics for 10 seconds then.
The mic's muted, Your Honor.
Thank you. 10 it is. Roll call, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Weren?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Carried as well, one able, next one.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordnances to the Marshalltown, Iowa by amending Chapter 76 Traffic Schedule, Schedule Number Four, South Intersection, First Read.
Any motion?
Don't move, Your Honor.
Isom on the motion?
Second.
Gowdy on the second, thank you. Discussion.
Again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Our construction season netted two new stop signs along two new sections of street that were constructed, one stop sign on northbound Seventh Avenue at South Ridge Road, and one on southbound Ninth Street at Washington Street. Those are the two that were installed in 2020. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any? Anticipating, there might be somebody on at least one of those two intersections that might want to weigh in, let's go ahead and open up the mic then for 10 seconds.
The mic's open.
10 seconds are up. Let's vote.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carried as well, very good. Now we're on to the discussion part of the meeting, that's J. Number one is discussion of the lease agreement for the Fisher Community Center.
I'll take this one, Your Honor. So for some of you who are on the council, I think some of you were in 2019 when we approved an agreement with the Fisher Community Center for some tax levy dollars which are especially levied for the operations and maintenance of a non-city-owned civic center. So part of this agreement states that the funds are to, what we're getting in return for the fund is that they are to be providing a public use for the Fisher Community. Ultimately, as you're all probably aware, that the Durachio on August 10th caused significant damage to the building, and it has not been available. We have paid through the month of December, but I do want the council to provide some clarification as to whether you intend to provide those payments for the remainder of this fiscal year, and then as we start talking about next fiscal year, if that is your intention, through either a variety of ways that that can be accomplished with an amendment to the agreement, a termination of the agreement, a new agreement put in place. And so ultimately, your direction on this is going to provide us as staff the direction of what we need to do and bring forward on the December 20th agenda, based on what you're willing.
Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I would, I just really need some more information as far as it goes as to what, what the other organizations, as a part of the paying toward this, how are they being funded? The Fisher Community Center, is insurance covering their fees at this point? Where are they at? To help me make a better decision of where, where I want to be at.
And, Your Honor, we do have, there are at least two representatives of the Fisher Community, I'm going to get my name mixed up there, Fisher Community Center Board of Trustees and Fisher Governor Foundation on to, to answer any questions like that.
It was this time that I can speak? I'm not quite sure when to jump in. Yes, okay. So I will, I'd like to take this time to just kind of bring everybody up to speed on what is happening. And what I want to do is start back in 2016, when there was a group that came together to start looking at the Fisher Community Center and certainly the art collection. Because the collection itself was in dire straits of needing some renovation, or some restoration work done to them. So back in 2016, we realized that the art collection and what that does for the community was really the foundation of that community center. And so efforts were made to restore this art. And like I said, since, well, since 2016, 25 community members had been volunteering their time and working diligently to not only get the art restored, but also start making plans for the renovation of the Fisher Community Center. We started obviously needing to raise some funds and to restore the art, and also to begin those renovation plans. Since that time, we have raised three, over $350,000 for the restoration of the art. And as I think you all know, that art is currently being restored, was out of the building a month before the Durachio hit, thank God. There has been another $48,000, $49,000 raised to help pay for consultants who did a utilization and facility condition assessment. This included our work with our vetted architect, FEH. Now, this was all done prior to the Durachio. Post the Durachio, we have incurred expenses that have not been covered by our insurance. There was, within the damaged area, there was a lot of asbestos that needed to be removed. And we were talking at a price tag of over $600,000 to get that asbestos removed. Of that $600,000, $100,000 was not paid for by insurance. So we had to come up with those funds to cover the expense so that we could have the asbestos removed from the entire building. We're going to have to also pay for the repairs from removing the asbestos in areas that were not damaged and were not covered by the insurance. But we felt as though for the future of this facility, it was important to have all of the asbestos removed at this time. We've also incurred expenses like $10,000 to have the tree removal in areas that was, again, not covered by our insurance. We've also incurred expenses for our architect and the general contractor for the restoration of that building. We are still working with the insurance carrier and the architect to determine the full cost of the restoration, the insurance coverage, and then of course, the pending gap. Our future plans are to restore the area, the auditorium, and to make these areas use for public meeting spaces, just like they were before the Durachio. We're looking at this, when we were first looking at the renovation of the Fisher Community Center, we were looking at a large renovation. Well, now because we need to get this building back into working operations, we are looking at phases. And so Phase One is to get this facility back to full utilization. Another phase will be hopefully to put on a significant addition to this building, and of course, another phase of completely restoring the theater. But for right now, we need to get the existing footprint back in operations, but we're not looking at just making it back into operations, we want to make it spectacular, and so much better than it was before, and an incredible place for this art collection to come back home to. So, but some of the things that we are going to have to do with this Phase One is replace the HVAC system, the electrical system, we need an entirely new roof, the art gallery will need to be renovated. We want, well, the auditorium will probably stay as, where it is, but there will be renovations to the auditorium itself with a catering kitchen. We will have meeting rooms, we need new restrooms, anybody who used those know that that's about 50 years overdue. We will continue to house tenants in this building to help pay for the rent of the operations. The interior of this facility, of course, will be completely renovated, and we want to get the theater back in operating condition. But the future improvements, like I said, we're looking at, you know, someday really renovating that theater, making the addition, and our plans are hopefully someday to also have a bridge that connects the bike trail over that land creek to the facility. However, until we're able to complete the restoration of Phase One, we need to continue to operate that building. We need to make expenses that aren't covered by our insurance, such as those that I previously mentioned. We also need to cover our ongoing utilities, maintenance, insurance, et cetera. So there is going to have to be, there is going to be a gap, and a significant gap between what the insurance will cover and what it's going to cost to renovate this facility. So knowing that we're going to have to go out and do fundraising, and be, but before we invest any more in this building, we have got to be assured that we are going to be able to responsibly and successfully maintain the operations of that facility. So on behalf of the Fisher Governor Foundation, I would respectfully request that there is a continuation of the monthly support during this time of restoration of this building, and secondly, that we have the city's commitment to continue funding Fisher Community Center at a minimum of $100,000 as it currently is per year, post the rehabilitation of the building. I cannot, in good conscience, go out and raise funds if I don't know that we are going to be able to successfully operate this facility, and without the support from the city, we can't do it. So, which is why we need this commitment now.
Thanks, Karen.
Yep.
Comments, questions, or further discussion among the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Martin here. Fisher Community Center has long been a part of the cultural history and, and expansion of all kinds of activities for Marshalltown people. The partnership that was established, I believe, is certainly worth continuing. I know we're, we together are facing a big deficit to bring it up to, up to speed, but it's, it's within our power to do so. but it's, it's within our power to do so, and it's certainly worth it. There are so many activities that do take place there, and for the public meetings and so on, and candidate forums, those types of things, with adequate path parking and so on. I worked in that building for Red Cross for approximately five years, and I'm well aware of the deficiencies and those now caused by the derecho. So, I, I would suggest we, we firmly move ahead, continue the payments as stated, and bring forth a resolution finalizing our, our option. So, further discussion is probably necessary. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. Any replies or comments or questions?
Your Honor, this is Gabe.
Go ahead, Mr. Eisen.
I just want to support and back what Mr. Martin had said, and I would agree that as we've bridged the gap for other business owners or buildings or other such manners throughout town through the, the storms and otherwise, I don't think there's a reason we shouldn't be moving forward, as Bill had mentioned, and I guess directly to the resolution supporting option two B.
Thank you. Somebody else had started to talk about the same time.
It was me, Your Honor, Gary.
Sure, Mr. Thompson.
First of all, just a housekeeping thing, for the record, can Karen state her name and address and why she spoke on this, what her position is?
Sure. Karen Gregory, and I am the Executive Director of the Martha Allen Tyne Foundation at 16 East Main, but I'm also the Secretary Treasurer of the Fisher Governor Foundation.
Thanks, Karen. And I would like to, to follow up on what Mr. Martin and Mr. Eisen said. I don't understand why we're even considering pulling the rug out from under this organization. You know, this, this is a special levy. I don't think we're facing any deadline right now on that. It will come up in the budget talk. The, you know, I can honestly say that I wasn't on the council in 19, I wasn't for this originally, but I see the value that this adds to the community of providing a civic center, you know, a place for these nonprofits to go and use the meeting rooms. The building has a storied history, like everybody says, it has the facilities. I honestly don't see why we need to do anything to modify or amend anything. We just let it flow through and then just stay in touch with the Fisher Community Center Board to find out what their timetable is. Obviously, we need to have further discussion on this as part of the budget hearing or meeting. But this is a facility we deemed as the civic center for Marshalltown. I don't see any reason to change that at this time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Mr. Thompson. Further comment?
This is a clarification I just want to offer, is that ultimately, it was my reading of the agreement as currently written, and however far of the public use that I felt from a staff level brought about a concern that needed to be brought to the council's attention, so that we are all on the same page about continuing payments. And so, ultimately, I did not feel that there was clear direction with the agreement in the current state, and so that's why I'm before you tonight.
But Jessica, I'm, I'm looking at the lease agreement, I don't see that in there where it says it has to be, I mean, what, what paragraph are you referencing? Because it says that the payments can go for rent, maintenance, insurance, and taxes.
It's paragraph number four that states that the, no rental fees for the public use of the auditorium or meeting rooms, with public use being defined in a certain way. And so, that is, that is what they were to provide in return for those payments, and so therefore, from the staff perspective and continuing payments, that was not clear, because obviously that is not being provided right now, so.
But either it's the library, and they have a special levy too.
There is no agreement that would have in place with the library for that levy, there's no contract in place. So, there are differences here between these two organizations and how we, how we do a levy. This is also not a non, it's a non-voted levy, whereas the library is a voted levy, so there are some differences there as well.
I guess I, short of legal opinion from our attorney, I guess I don't interpret paragraph four the same way you do, so.
And Roger was consulted before the site was on his agenda.
All right.
So, I guess, to echo Gary. I guess I would like to hear from Roger, what, I just want to hear from Roger with regards to paragraph four, because it says the Fisher Community Center Board of Trustees shall ensure the Fisher Community Center charges no rental fees for public use. I guess where in that section does it technically say it has to be, have public use for the lease to be valid? I guess I'm trying to understand to Gary's point where it specifically calls that out.
I think the whole issue is that the city is spending tax dollars for a facility, and the question was whether we are getting what we had hoped to get by spending those tax dollars. I don't think anyone was trying to pull any rug, but I do think that there wasn't tendency to be, to make certain that the council was on board with the fact that these payments were continuing while the building was not in use. And that's the whole purpose of this discussion. I see it.
I know, Sue, part of Sue's question was what's happened to the tenants. I know that Timber has taken up residence in the Unity Lutheran Church basement for I'm not sure about the other tenants and where things stand with them. Could anybody be in a position to address those, that part of the question that she
I, I believe that all of the current, the old tenants have found places to temporarily or some of them are permanently housed. I know that United Way is at the YMCA, YWCA. And I know of others that have, have landed in, but I'm guessing are going to be permanent places.
Thanks. For whatever's worth, when we moved to town in 1986, the, but the first thing that happened was Rex Reiden, who was our senior partner, led a fundraiser to raise, as I remember, it was two and a half million, give or take a half million, to bring that building up to code. But the community really stepped forward in that one because they knew it's worth, and they, they knew that we had a nice art collection, and they knew it needed to be ADA compliant, so. But that was a long time ago, and so, it's, even if we hadn't had the derecho, it was time to do something now, too. But I, I shouldn't be talking, because not everybody has spoken up yet from the council, and I haven't opened up the mic yet.
Your Honor, I, I look at this somewhat, I know there are many differences, but somewhat as when we were looking at renovating the Coliseum and then had a tornado hit. It feels almost similar in many ways that this disaster of the derecho gives us the opportunity to make something better and to have some, I mean, we are, it forces our hand. And I would think that that possibly, you know, you mentioned Mr. Reiden doing the fundraiser. It, it just, as Karen was talking, it reminded me of like, okay, what are we going to have to do? If there's a gap, then, then we probably need to adopt a, a plan to do fundraising and to, to put it back together, because it is an integral part of our community, and it deserves to be renovated and back into action so that people can use it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gale. Anyone else at the council? You're on mute, Bethany.
Sorry, I thought, I must have been off mute, I realized it. I just wanted to say that I'm in favor of continuing support, and I, I second everybody else took what I was going to say, so I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, this is Mike Goudy. I would echo all that, and, and I also was on mute, and I almost started talking. Anyway, it is a integral part of, of Marshalltown and has been for many, many years, and, and whatever legal avenue we need to take to get this, these payments to continue, or the wording, or, or if we don't need to, let's just move forward, and if we need to, it shouldn't be more than just a minor change or whatever case may be, but we need to continue this and, and build this facility back up so it's a state-of-the-art and something Marshalltown can be proud of when we get the art and, and everything back up like it should be, the center of Marshalltown.
I have an idea. Now that we've almost got the Coliseum back into its glory, better than ever, why don't we just get Al Hoop and Mike Goudy to help chair the fundraiser for this next building? Because you guys did such a nice job on that Coliseum, you really did.
Well, certainly, I would volunteer for a project of that, and if it turned out as well as, as the fundraiser for the Coliseum, I'd be tickled to death.
Yeah. I don't think we'll invite Jason Brown back, although that was fun, and a lot of people stepped up and donated that night, but let's figure out something else.
You know, I, in comparison, comparing the Coliseum to the Fisher Community Center, people in this community are really passionate about that facility, and the depth of work of the volunteers that we have had since 2016 to move along the things that we have is extraordinary. And there are no paid staff that are moving this project forward, none. And so, that, again, I think speaks to the depth of the commitment of this community for the Fisher Community Center. So, you know, hearing your support is just warming my heart, so thank you, and I'll shut up now.
Let, let me give one more chance for other concerts to speak, and if not, then we ought to open the mic. Let's open it for 15 seconds this time.
So, line drive, Your Honor.
This is Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I'm hoping that in the future, the Grandma Fisher Trust helps restore the theater, and because it's dedicated to the arts, and help the Martha Allen Tyne Foundation continue a little deeper in its pocket than its standard donations to help rebuild this facility. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Eaton. Any other public comment? Let's keep the mics open another 15 seconds. Okay. Does staff need a motion for this, or do you just kind of get a sense for what we need to do to move forward?
I, I would like a, a motion, and I would like a resolution on this next agenda, just so that there is a clear line of delineation that staff is to continue payment under the current agreement.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I would make a motion that we do 2A in this letter, this memo, continue the payment as stated, but note to public use, not requirement for the payment, but with a clause that during their renovation, and we could, you know, time to be determined, we can go back and revisit it then, when they get the renovations completed. If that's agreeable with other councils.
That'll work as a motion, I'll, and then change it second. Further discussion? Let's call the roll.
Eisen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. On to discussion item number two, rental and use fees for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum. Orzo.
Jeff, Art Direct Director, I sent a memo with some proposed fees. Kind of to summarize that memo was, we surveyed what other entities in Marshalltown were charging for similar meeting rooms, gym spaces, as well as other communities in Iowa of like size or like facilities. And again, I think our facility is a little bit different than everyone else's, but kind of as far as what court rental fees were being charged for, from other groups. So, we've come up with a proposed set of fees. We would like to do a weekday fee versus a weekend fee, knowing that we're going to have more use potentially on the weeknights and the weekends. Also, wanted to point out that our conference room, which will be the Martha Allen Tyne Conference Room for their great donation, will be available free for use for nonprofits and service clubs Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We are also looking to have a drop-in fee for people who want to just come in and play pickleball for an hour, or shuffleboard, or programs like that in the gym. Those would be for adults. We weren't planning on charging any drop-in fees for youth. And then we kind of get with some other special fees, like for tournament fees or, or large events, like say a wedding or Oktoberfest, or things where we were going to have to do more setup of the 400 tables and chairs, like for the pancake days, or for the tournaments, we're going to need extra staff to clean the bathrooms, take out trash, do things like that. So, these are all similar type fees you would see when renting other facilities through other parts, direct departments. And then overall, we're looking at if, if we, based on what our rentals are, we're hoping to bring in about $21,000, and our expenses are going to be $31,000. So, we're kind of cutting the gap of making the building sustainable and covering the costs of our staff and getting people into our building. Do you have any answer to any questions?
Are there any?
This is Bill. Jeff, on, on setups, you know, that's going to be, have to be a flexible type of crew coming in, and very flexible, in fact, because if you get into, to the whole gym, or half gym, or conference rooms, and the setups for those, especially for larger things, is going to be quite substantial. I mean, if you go two, 300, 400 chairs on the gym floor, I mean, that takes some impact, and then to staff it, when, if that's necessary. So, I think there's some add-on costs that, that may have to be considered.
And so, for a large event, for a large event fee, we were going to charge $600, let's say there's an event on Saturday, like a wedding, so we were going to charge $600, which would include us setting up the stuff on Friday night, the event being held on Saturday. The event is also charged, being charged, like saying, the whole gym rental rate of $800, but then includes the time of our staff to come in and clean up at the end. And this was very similar to what we've done in the Coliseum in previous years when we were open. Also, just want to let you know that the, the middle name of Park and Recreation is Flexible, and so that's what we do on a daily basis. We have great staff that would come in and do that, and, and we, we did take into account how many people we would think we would bring in, how many hours it would take to set up all those tables and chairs, and I think that, that $600 covers that.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to have a full understanding of, of staff on what might be necessary. Thank you.
I was impressed by the amount of time it had to take you to check around with other facilities to put that schedule together, but other, other questions or comments by the council?
Your Honor, it's Gary, if I may.
Mr. Thompson, go for it.
Yeah. You're, for like a pickup basketball game, you're, an hourly rate of $25, that seems low to me compared to what we used to pay back when I was young and playing, running gyms at the school system. Are you okay with that 25 bucks?
Well, so me at $25 would be like you renting it for your kids' basketball practice, whereas like if we were doing a pickup game, we're talking about having like Mondays and Wednesdays be drop-in, so that would be then the $3 rate of Whereas like if we were doing a pickup game, we're talking about having like Mondays and Wednesdays be drop-in. So that would be then the three dollar rate of people coming in. But I think the twenty-five dollars per court is very similar to what the Y is charging and some other places in town. Some places in Des Moines were charging more than that, but I didn't think we were in that same, I guess, arena. So yes, I think it is affordable and covers our costs. A lot of times what's going to be happening is someone's renting the gym on an evening for practice. We're also going to have our staff in there for zumba or taekwondo. So it's not like we'll have additional staff necessarily for some of those evening things because we're going to be programming the rest of the building for, for other things. So we're pretty much going to have staff in there most of the nights and weekends anyway.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. I just, I don't want to gouge anybody, but I just don't want to give, give anything away either. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, let's open the lines again. Just go ten seconds.
The line's running muted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ten, it is. Does staff have its direction, or do you need a motion?
Yep. So I'll have a resolution that'll come back for you on the twenty-eighth then to approve these fees.
That works. Okay, thank you. Let's segue into the third discussion item about alcohol use in the Coliseum.
Okay, and Jeff Hubbard, Parked Director Director again on this one. And we've talked about this for several council meetings. And I think there were some clarifications or concerns that people had. So in the memo that I sent out, I think we tried to address those ones. One of the big ones that I wanted to address that we would just be doing the beer and wine licensing, so it'd be single-serving cans and bottles of single-serving bottles of wine that we would be issuing. So we wouldn't be pouring anything. Also, when we, when we, we're not going to be having alcohol on staff or on hand in the building the entire summer, or I mean, the entire year long. When, when we have, have an event like a wedding, Oktoberfest, things like that, we would have the distributor that we entered into agreement with for product deliver the stuff, you know, Thursday or Friday before the event on Saturday. We would store it in a secure room down in the basement that only staff would have keys to, and the event staff then that Saturday night. And then at the end of the, at the end of the event, all that would get put back in the room and locked up. And then whatever, whatever wasn't opened, unused cases and things like that would get returned back to the distributor. So we'd only pay for what we were using. So I mean, at any given time, the alcohol would not be in the building for probably longer than a week. So I think that might help some people's concerns. All of our employees in the Coliseum would obviously be our part-time employees. They would be trained and complete the Iowa Program for Alcohol Compliance Training Course through the State of Iowa's Alcohol Beverage Division. So I think those can answer some of the concerns, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody else would have.
Bear away with questions or comments.
Your Honor, it's Gary again.
Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
Jeff, are you going to buy the software to be able to scan IDs or just kind of leave it up to the the employees to actually look at the license and do the math on the date?
I think we would use staff to look at the driver's license of everybody and then wristband those that are appropriate age.
Okay, that was my next question. If someone comes up to the counter and buys twelve beers to take back to the table, so you're going to be carting at the door and wristbanding that?
Well, yes, and I don't think we would allow someone to buy twelve. You would only be able to buy probably two. Most places where you go, you're only allowed in so many. You know, you couldn't just go buy a twelve-pack. So I think two would be the limit for a person. They'd have to keep on coming back if they wanted to buy the round for their table. I think that's one of the things that's kind of covered in the program of training for our staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
And you know, maybe if, if this gets to be where we are having more events and we are creating more revenue, that could be something we could look at. But I think for now, we just want to keep it simple.
Other comments or questions? Let's open the mics on this one again. Ten.
The line's running muted, Your Honor.
Okay. Back to mute. And again, does staff have the, I didn't hear any objections to this type of thing. Do the staff need to vote on this one, or can you just go forward with another thing coming?
Have a resolution, have a resolution again on the twenty-eighth then to approve for us to apply for a liquor license.
I think even before that, I think if there's disagreement about this, we'd want to go the path that Jeff is suggesting. Otherwise, we would just go ahead and start our process. And ultimately, that's going to come back to the city council to approve anyways, as you have the ultimate authority of approving any liquor license within city limits. So there's, there's two ways that we can do this.
Okay. I think you've got your direction. And that takes us to.
Please provide direction.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
There are two ways to do this. We could bring back a resolution on the twenty-eighth if you all feel that that is the, that you want to do it that way. Or we as staff can move forward with the application process, knowing that the liquor license ultimately has to be approved by the council before it can be issued. My concern would be I don't want staff to spend a significant amount of time working on this if there really is not a desire to move forward with it. So I'm comfortable with the resolution on the twenty-eighth, if that's what everybody would like, but I'm also comfortable proceeding if that's how you'd like to proceed.
Why don't I call for anybody that feels strongly one way or the other to make a motion?
This is, this is Al Hoop, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Would be absolutely, positively against the city being involved in alcohol. That might be a known.
I think most of us would have anticipated that by now. We understand that.
Your Honor, this is Gary. With that being said, I think, I think we'd all be comfortable to bring it back as a resolution on the twenty-eighth.
I'll consider that was a motion, and let's see if anybody wants to second it.
Second.
Second.
Okay, got a couple seconds. Let's go ahead and call, call the roll on this one.
Weren?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Booth?
No.
Eason?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Staff has its direction. On to K, public comment. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda at this time. Approach the microphone or your telephone or your iPad and state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes unless a longer comment is authorized by the mayor. Speak direct comments. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and the council as a whole. Mayor and council, councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on those items raised in public comments in order to comply with the open meetings laws. The lines are unmuted, and the microphones are open, and let's go twenty seconds for this one.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to address the body, if I could.
You can.
All right. My name is Michael Swope. I was born and raised in Marshalltown. I left when I was twenty-one, joined the Navy, which I stayed in for a long period of time. I'm back now, and I, there's a church at five oh six West, or East Boone, an old dilapidated church that I would like to buy from the city, is owned by the city. I would like to buy it from the city and renovate it. I have, I'm an ordained minister and through the Universal Life Church Ministries, and I'm the President of Christian Soldiers Ministries Incorporated. We are large and getting larger. We're, we have a presence in twenty-nine countries. My headquarters will be in Marshalltown. I would like to buy this church and possibly save the city some money in demolition, which I would estimate would be anywhere from thirty to forty-five thousand dollars to demolish this building. That's just a guess. But I would like to buy this building for a, for a dollar. And that's really the extent of what I had to say. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you please state your address first?
Oh, I'm sorry. My address is four oh five West Lynn in Marshalltown.
Thanks. Let me open the mic back up for another fifteen seconds. Three, two, one. Before I adjourn the meeting, I'd like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Bethany Weren for subbing for me while I was technically challenged to get online by my iPad. I'll do better the next time if we have to meet again this way. And I know we're going to have some discussion about that in terms of what the COVID rates are doing and whether, whether and how we'll meet next. At this time, by my clock, it's actually only four forty-eight California time, but let's go six forty-eight, March Town time, we are adjourned.